... o'clock, I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask the city manager, call roll. Jim Benage?
President?
Jeff Elsop?
Here.
Jeff Hawes?
Here.
Betty Martin?
Here.
Justin Smith?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Appreciate it. With all of our meetings, we're going to open with a moment of silent prayer. Do you want to let everybody know before we do that, that we have had some pastors that indicated some interest in coming and opening our meetings with prayer beginning next month already. So, but in the meantime, when we don't have a pastor that has called and he or she has taken this time slot, we're going to have a silent prayer to open the meetings. So, just a reminder to all the members of the clergy in Bel Air, if that's something, we are opening that up to all faith. Would welcome you to call City Hall if you're interested. And also, before I get into that, I do want to share some news that Councilmember Benage shared with me over the weekend that I want to make everyone aware of and ask that you keep this man's family and his friends in your prayers, especially as we get into our silent prayer, you might just say a special one for his family. But a retired bishop, Eugene Gerber, did I say that correctly? Gerber, I want to make sure we honor this man correctly, passed away Saturday, and this man was a true visionary for this very region, for Bel Air. He was a longtime resident of Bel Air, and he was the bishop from here in Wichita from eighty-three to two thousand and one. Reason why this man is so special to Bel Air is that it was his vision that built the Catholic Care Center, Shepherd's Crossing, the Spiritual Life Center, the Priest Retirement Center, and also the Ascension Cemetery that are all here within our city limits. So, and of course, all of those, you know, the campus is known as Catholic Care Center, but do want to honor retired Bishop Eugene Gerber. He did lots of things for the community too, not just here in Bel Air, but it was his vision that brought us to Lord's Diner downtown Wichita. And he also, you know, developed the nationally recognized stewardship way of life that allows Catholic children to attend Catholic schools tuition-free. So, he was a great shepherd and visionary for the Catholic Diocese of Wichita, an amazing visionary for the city of Bel Air, and we lost him on Saturday. I appreciate Councilmember Benage bringing this to my attention, and I wanted to share that. I would ask you think of his friends and family as we, if you'll join me in a moment of silent prayer. Amen. Now, please rise and join us in saying of a pledge of allegiance, American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a relatively short agenda this evening. It's a good thing because the playoffs, Major League Baseball playoffs are in full swing beginning this evening, so do that. Actually, four items on our agenda tonight. We're going to have a public hearing, and then after that, we'll discuss issuing the IRB, that is the subject of the public hearing, have an appointment, and then we're going to look at some bids for some water and sewer. First thing to come before council this evening is the consent agenda, and this consists simply of the amendments of the September eighteenth city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
At first and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next is appropriations ordinance eighteen dash nineteen in the amount of three hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve appropriations ordinance eighteen dash nineteen. Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Citizens requested appearances, I do not have any, but I would, at this time, open up the public hearing. The resolution, anytime we issue an IRB, we have to have a public hearing. It's just a part of the law, and that's what we're doing here tonight. So, the resolution of intent to issue an IRB for Homestead Senior Housing, this was approved at our last council meeting, the September eighteenth meeting, and we set the public hearing for tonight. So, the purpose of this hearing is to give citizens the opportunity to share any comments they may have in regards to the IRB issuance. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this topic? I have declared the public hearing open at this time. Anyone in the audience wishing to address? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
First and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Citizens concerned, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address council this Seeing none, we're going to move to reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Elsop.
I have no report.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I also have no report.
Mr. Martin?
Oh, I was just counting on him to give a report on CCU. I sat in on CCU in place of the mayor, but I didn't write out a report. I gave the mayor the papers. And I also attended the open houses on Saturday at Iron Gate. The hamburgers was wonderful. I picked out a house, but unless you give me a collection, I can't afford it. But, oh, they've got some beautiful homes over there, and they're patio homes, and they had them all dolled up per se, and the staff was very nice, they weren't pushy. So, I recommend that anybody that's looking for a home in Bel Air, that they just want a small, smaller house, one has a basement, some have basements, some don't, they have the security shelters in them, but they were just, I've never seen bathrooms that big. Oh, they were beautiful. So, and that's about all I had, Mayor.
Benage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have three items. One is Friday I attended the South Central Kansas Transportation Coalition, which is an extension of REIT. Topic of discussion was preparation for the upcoming state transportation task force hearings, which are Newton on Thursday, the fourth of October, and here in Wichita on the eighteenth of October. Coalition has a map of some seventeen projects that they're sponsoring. One of the projects that wasn't on there is the K-254, so we're looking at getting that added to the map. North Junction has, of course, been the top priority. Last night, I visited with Weeblow Pack five-eight-five. It's a requirement for their advancement is scouts visit with a government official, so somehow I got invited. I'm glad to do it. The kids asked questions about term of office and who currently holds the office, so we got to speak about each one of you. They want to know what you did, and I told them as best I could, but I don't always know what everybody's work involves. But, anyway, and what we do in some of the current issues that we have going on in the council. So, always fun and good to help with young people understanding about city government as best I can, so. I also this afternoon attended the K-254 Development Association Meeting, but I think Councilmember Hawes and/or last Mr. City Manager have more to add to that, so I'll let them speak on that one. Thank you.
Councilmember Hawes?
Thank you. Yeah, like Councilmember Benage said, we had our K-254 Corridor Development Association meeting today. It was a membership, or a meeting for the entire membership, and then we had a board of directors meeting afterwards. We discussed the plans to present to the task force, the road task force in Kansas, which is October eighteenth. Apparently, I'm going to be giving the presentation, so wish me luck on that one. But, you know, there's many aspects to this two fifty-four. I think, as all of you know, I'm very passionate about this, so to fix this road as far as a safety issue, as well as economic issue, is a very, very big deal. And so, I do actually, if anybody knows, anybody that they think should be members, you know, we would love the membership, and if you have any recommendations, please let us know.
Appreciate it, thank you. And some of you may have seen that Councilmember Hawes appeared on KWCH.
He wouldn't give me his autograph.
Well.
He didn't pay enough.
I guess.
But talking about this K-254 corridor, and I'm glad to see members of our community championing this project and bringing members of the community together. It's not, this is not just a Bel Air project, so was happy to see that. Councilmember Benage spoke about how needed it is speaking to youngsters about city government. So, I accepted an invitation this week, it'll be later this month, but I will again be speaking to the kindergarten class at Sunrise Christian Academy, which is always a lot of fun when you play Who Am I? with kindergartners. And then, we let kindergartners plan the perfect utopia, the perfect city. And basically, what I've learned is if it has a jumpy jump land, an ocean, and a Burger King, I think have usually been the top three, that if we have those, we're good. I don't know what I can do about the ocean, my dad is ordained, but we'll see about that. So, it is neat to see, I just got a letter, I haven't actually had a chance to look at it yet, but it looks like we'll have the If I Were Mayor contest again, so we'll get the word out on that. And I do appreciate the fact that you can see some of the youngsters wanting to learn about local government. It's a lot of fun on that. Couple of things coming up, October sixth is the curbside cleanup, so this Saturday, and then the brush side is open the following Saturday, correct, the thirteenth? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, for the brush side, that'll be the last time it'll be open on that, and I will close by telling Councilmember Martin how much I appreciated her attending in my stead for the CCU. She is our only alternate on our CCU after Ellie stepped down, and it's been a few months, so would like, if there's anybody up here or at home, we would like to have a second alternate to serve on the CCU. It's rare that two of us do need to miss, but it has happened. So, right now, Councilmember Elsop, myself, and former Councilmember Ken Lee serve on that, and Councilmember Martin is the alternate. So, again, if anyone has an interest in serving as the, as our second alternate on the CCU, Hissen Creek Utility Authority, we're talking about water and sewer and all of that, would certainly welcome that input, and that is an invitation to everyone. With that, I'm going to turn it over to City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind everyone needing a registration card that they can pick one up at City Hall. Citizens might need a registration card if they are turning eighteen on or before Election Day, if they've had an address changed or newly moving to Bel Air, if they've updated their party affiliation. Those are all reasons to get to re-register to vote. Registration cards must be mailed on or before October sixteenth. This is, registration cards are mailed to the county, so we, the county just oversees it, and we're kind of an outpost. Also, if a person does miss that deadline, the county asks us to advise people that that person can vote on provisional ballot, so that vote is counted differently when someone votes on a provisional ballot. Also, wanted to update council, I gave a report on the FCC's plans to preempt local control of how cell towers are deployed within any given city. On September twenty-sixth, the FCC did pass that regulatory policy, much like the original one that I described to you, so not much has changed. That will reduce cities' abilities to negotiate, or even in some cases, control aesthetics, agreements, et cetera, with cell towers placed within cities. The League of Kansas Municipalities is working with several cities. I plan to attend the special meeting that they're having on how Kansas might get involved to protect the rights of cities to control this space, and I'd be happy to take any information or any positions that the council would want to be represented there.
Could you clarify the future steps of the process for approval of that regulation?
Yes, there is a ninety-day time period. That ninety-day period is for, I believe that's a ninety-day waiting period. I know that the public comment period has passed, but there's a ninety-day waiting period before the law becomes, before publication, that's what it is. There's a ninety-day waiting period, and then the law's published, then it becomes, the regulation is published, then it becomes law. So, we anticipate the beginning of the year, right around then, that's when the law takes effect.
So, this isn't a public comment period now, it's just a waiting period?
I believe so. I can get some more clarity on that. I don't want to confuse another public comment period I'm thinking of with it, but I can get that to you because the position of cities in Kansas is if we can band together and feed our information to Washington, we can either affect that law. Right now, honestly, the primary position is that we probably can get a case to go before court and go through court challenges to overturn that regulation as being overbroad. So, there may be some opportunity to comment still, but I'll find out.
Congress does have the option to overrule the FCC on this as well?
Yes, they do. Yes, they do.
Thank you.
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few items to mention. This Saturday, October sixth, is the Community Wide Cleanup Day. So, this is where it's basically curbside cleanup, so if anybody at home has got things they need to dispose of, they can take that to the curb they recommended being on, I think by six or seven AM at the latest. But it can be furniture, it can be, you know, numerous things. If anybody wants to know the specifics, they can check it on the website. There are certain things that they won't accept, things with freon, tires, those types of things, but large items and stuff, they'll pick up you as long as you have them at the curb. And like I said, that's this Saturday. The mayor mentioned that the brush side, the last one, is this month. We've had seventy-seven new homes to date, about eleven point five million dollars value, so that's on track with what we've done in future years. I think a couple of years, we actually hit a hundred, not sure that we'll meet that this year, if we're at seventy-seven now, but we could get close to that, so that's a very positive growth. As far as Wood Lawn, council receives these project status reports, that there's a lot involved in it, but just for the citizens, I wanted to point out a couple of things. The field surveys are complete, with the exception of a couple utility locates. TEC completed the field data collection for the traffic study and is processing the information, and then the traffic analysis will follow soon thereafter. And then, we'll start getting to the point where I think the engineers will be ready to discuss options for lanes, turns, stoplights versus roundabouts, et cetera, et cetera. So, they're still getting all the preliminary data on Wood Lawn. And then, the last thing I wanted to mention, Councilmember Hawes was talking about the, and Benage was talking about the task force, KDOT task force, and I did put Bel Air on for, to also speak, and so I'll have to be working with the mayor on a presentation for us, but obviously, we don't have any state highways running through Bel Air other than we border two fifty-four, and we've all talked about how important that is to us. So, and the North Junction impacts a lot of our citizens. So, I think those would be the two primary issues we'll talk about, is some type of improvements on two fifty-four, and then, of course, make sure that the North Junction moves forward as well. And that was all I had, Mayor.
Appreciate it. I'd just like to piggyback on what our city attorney shared, October sixteenth, the deadline to register to vote. This is, election is, there's a lot of races to be decided at the federal level. We have a United States representative at the state level. I know we're, we have a governor and secretary of state, and just saw a poll earlier this, late last week, where the governor's race, where the Republican nominee and the Democrat nominee are separated by less than one percent on a poll there. We have, you know, locally, we have a state representative, we have a county commissioner. Every vote matters. You don't have to look that far back, but at our primary in August, where several of these races were decided by forty, fifty, you know, less than a hundred votes, in Hutchinson, there was a state representative changed hands by one vote, one vote for that district. So, every vote does count, it does matter, and I would encourage those of you, if you've not registered to vote, to please do so, and if you are registered to vote, please exercise your right and make informed decisions and show up at the polls in November. With that, we're going to move into ordinances, resolutions, and final actions. The item made, first item to come before us this evening, like I talked about a little bit previously in the public hearing, the IRB process requires a resolution determining the advisability of issuing an IRB, which was, like I said, this was approved at our last meeting. We just held a public hearing, and the WSU Wichita State University Cost Benefit Analysis has been completed. So, tonight's resolution amends the previous resolution in that the CBA has been performed, which is the cost benefit analysis, and that the public hearing is held, which is the thing we said we would do. And I see Mr. Kevin Cowan is here with Gilmore and Bell, if we have any questions.
Mr. Mayor? Good evening. One thing I was curious about is on the report from WSU on the cost benefit analysis, I believe the state, the number for the state was three to three point four, something like that. Off the top of my head, I don't remember exactly what it was.
Over ten years, yes.
Yeah, yeah. And the number for Bel Air was one. Could you extrapolate on what those numbers mean a little bit for us?
Yes, so there were two reports, I think, a five-year measured, measured over five years, one measured over ten years. The resolution would approve the property tax abatement for five years with the option of extending it, and that's why there were the two reports. So, the significance in this program is something that was produced by the Department of Commerce at the state, and it measures not only the costs, which are easier to quantify, I think, in terms of a property tax abatement. That's the city's cost, it would be the county's cost, it's the school district cost, versus benefits, which are going to be new residents, and maybe they're paying sales taxes, all the things that new residents can bring. So, the significance is, when measured over five years, all of those numbers were much more positive. Even on ten years, everything was a positive ratio, with the city's one point oh, it was just slightly more than one, but it rounded down to one. Over five years, where the costs are less, you're only abating the property taxes for five years as opposed to ten, you're going to have less costs, you're going to have the same benefits, so it's going to be a more positive number. The state's number is always going to be a more positive ratio, if that's part of your question, because their property tax levy is not really part of the, and they have a very small property tax levy statewide, anyway. So, in terms of what's the cost to the state, it's essentially nothing, or very small. The cost to the city is larger because you have a larger mill levy that you're going to abate for five years. That's why you would see that sort of gap. The state is nearly held harmless in these sorts of things because you're not abating really anything in terms of the state. It's all the city, adult income tax, county adult income tax, and school district. Having said all of that, I always like to say that one of the weaknesses, I think, of these reports is they just measure during the period of time of your costs, and I assume most of the time, you're not interested in this sort of incentive unless this is going to be a long-term project. You're not thinking, well, they're only going to be here for five years or ten years, and we have a positive ratio for that period of time. You're hoping they're going to be here for fifty or sixty years. And so, I think when you view it that way, you have the ratio, and it's statutory, and you can look at it, and it's positive in all of these scenarios, and that's good, but it doesn't take into account the, you know, after five years or after ten years, and that community is here for the next forty years, where then presumably it's mostly benefit as opposed to cost. So, always like to add that. There are some limitations, and this is a statutory thing where the legislature wants the governing body to have this sort of report before it, in advance of approving the property tax abatement, so you can see that sort of ratio. But again, it only measures it for the period of time of whatever the costs are, if it's a five-year abatement, if it's a ten-year abatement. So, hopefully, you'll have some more benefits long-term that aren't reflected here.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, I think I've previously commented on why I don't support this, you know, the forecast looks out five and ten years, but I think the reality of this specific engagement is it'll likely only be a tax abatement that applies for a year or two while they pursue their long-term property tax exemption through the state as their nonprofit organization. So, the, I guess the thing that stood out to me in this report was that return on investment for the city is projected at kind of a dollar-for-dollar return, and that there's no true return on investment for this project, and so I won't provide the comments that I did the last time, as I've already stated why I don't support this project, but I did want to add that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, do you appreciate the comments?
Yeah. You know, I know Councilman Smith has said, talking about the Master Growth Plan in the past, and said how institutional development is not what we want, but, you know, I have to say, and I believe that, you know, the Master Growth Plan that we adopted and are going by is more of a guideline than a hard-written rule. I think when you look at what this provides as far as a need for senior housing, and especially at the cost of the senior housing for the lower income, that I think it provides so much more benefit than can even be measured in dollars, so, you know, I continue to be wholeheartedly for it.
Appreciate those. Any other comments or?
Mr. Mayor, I guess I just like to add that I think this is still a good move for
the city moving forward. You know, this is a piece of land, we're looking here, is an empty field, there's, there isn't, as far as we know, competing interest and plan moving forward, and also, this is not city-owned land, this is privately-owned land that's being developed. So, you know, I continue to support this project going forward. Again, this is for the, I guess, the low-income or lower-income senior housing, which is a demographic that we need to consider and that we don't cater to here within Bel Air, and I think we've had these discussions before in previous council meetings and brought up these ideas, but I just wanted to just reiterate that I continue to support the plan that's before us, and I think this is a good move for the city.
Thank you. And this is kind of the final step for this to move forward, and I just want to remind everybody that this resolution does not require the city to issue this IRB if the project doesn't move forward, so we're not on the hook for that. So, we're not on the hook for that. But this does start the process for when Homestead is ready to begin construction. So, that is what is before us tonight, is the resolution for the issuance of this IRB, again, if this project moves forward, and that's on them at that point.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make motion to approve a resolution of the governing body of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, amending Resolution Number R 18-4 of the city determining the advisability of issuing taxable industrial revenue bonds for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, and equipping of a commercial facility to be located in said city and authorizing execution of the related documents, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First, and we have two seconds. So, any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you for being here, sir.
You're welcome.
I like coming here, because that means things are growing. Next is an appointment to the Planning Commission. It's been open for two, three months now. And what we decided, it's one of those, I was having a conversation with the city manager when, for these different volunteer committees we have, and we have amazing, amazing crew of volunteers, amazing wonderful volunteers here that serve on these committees. And, you know, yeah, the mayor's making the appointments, but we have chairmen and chairwomen of these committees who know a heck of a lot more about what's going on and what they need, and a committee member, and all that. And we did have, actually, a number of applications that came forward for this one opening on the Planning Commission. And everybody up here needs to look no further back, excuse me, than last three months, to see how vital the Planning Commission is and their recommendations, and the things that they go through. As jogged your memory, this is why we kind of held tight for a month or two before appointing a brand-new person, so they didn't jump right in, with everything that was going on with the major issues they have before them recently. And so, the chairperson of the Planning Commission, James Schmidt, actually spoke with the different applicants, and one of them actually said that he would like to withdraw his name at this time, just didn't, he was starting a new business. But interest remained strong for this. But after the chairperson spoke with these applicants, Luke Lear is who he recommended to me, which is who I am recommending to you, to serve on the Planning Commission. He did submit the required application, it's there in your packet. We can see, talks about how he served on 4H and learned policy and procedures, and has been following the Planning Commission. So, like I said, Chairperson Schmidt spoke with him about that position and recommended his appointment. I know he and his wife live on East Ashton Court. This would be for a term that would run for three years, expiring in 2021, and I would ask that the council approve this appointment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to confirm the mayor's appointment of Luke Lear to the Bel Air Planning Commission.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Final item to come before council this night is bids for water and sewer. We're talking Phase 1 of the Villas at Prestwick. And you can see the different bids that came in. I was impressed to see that so many companies responded to our RFPs on that. We don't always get that many, but it was great to see that many people wanted, were interested, and responded to that. The other thing that's really exciting about this is the developers ready to move forward with Phase 1. MKEC has designed the water and sewer mains, which were reviewed by our city engineer. Bids were solicited, like I said, and five companies responded. The apparent low bid was from Donlinger Construction at $205,501, which is significantly below our engineer's estimate of 260, almost 261,000, as you can see there. So, I know, like I said, MKEC approved.
Jason Gish with MKEC was double-booked.
Okay. I looked up and didn't see him here, but certainly he recommends this, staff is comfortable using Donlinger. So, that's before, you can see all the bids for the water bid and the sewer, and then the total. But I'd like to ask a question, this is out of ignorance on my behalf for this, because we have the water bids, and then we have the sewer bids, where Donlinger is actually not the lowest bid for water, whereas they are for sewer, but total, because their sewer bid's so much lower, it's 205. Is this something where we can take a water bid from one company, the sewer bid from another, or is that going to cause way too many problems? And again, this is something that's going to be spread as special, it's not a city cost.
Right. And that's why I was hoping Jason could be here, because I thought maybe the question would come up, because that is a really valid question. But from what my experience has been in the past, is that they do break them out separately, but they also have a total. And I'm not sure why they broke out separately, but I do know that when, the key is the total bid, because when a company bids, and in this situation, two projects, which would be water and sewer, they always have fees that are related, or costs that are related to mobilization. So, getting all their equipment here, and that is always factored into the cost of the project. And so, I think that the issue we'd run into is, let's say, Middle Creek was the low at water, then if we tried to split that out, said, well, okay, we're going to take Middle Creek for the water and Donlinger for the sewer, because they were the low bid, then I think they would probably have to pull their bids, because that, the lower bid on one specific item doesn't mean that that covers the mobilization of that one item.
That makes a lot of sense, especially.
Yeah. Now, why they actually called water and sewer, that I don't know, but I do know that in the total bid, that's what we always look at, and there's always those mobilization costs in there.
But these lines, aren't these lines normally run parallel to each other?
No, but they put them in the same, because sewer requirements are, from KDHE, that water lines can't be within 10-foot of a sewer line. So, a lot of times, the water runs in the front of the house and the sewer in the back, because of those requirements. Now, there might be an issue that it's best to have them installed at the same time, for the grading purposes and things like that. And that may be another reason why you always do the water and sewer together.
Got it. And I just want to go back, your explanation, that makes a lot of sense. They're moving all that equipment, so if we were to hire one just for water, all of a sudden, their bid may be a little bit higher.
Yeah. I'm sure they'd have to come back and say, well, we can't just do one.
So, we need to look at the total. Okay. Appreciate the explanation on that. That's kind of what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page with that. So, but the fact that the low bid is from a company that MKEC is comfortable with, low bid is from a company our staff is comfortable with, and significantly below our engineer's estimate, I would have no problem suggesting and asking for a motion to we approve Donlinger Construction.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I motion we accept the bid from Donlinger Construction for the water and sanitary sewer improvements in Phase 1 of the Villas at Prestwick, and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments?
I guess I just have one brief comment. So, you know, we got the MKEC recommendation, that's good, our staff is comfortable with this. I don't see any reason to do anything other than what the recommendation is, so that's why I motion for it.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Now, for future issues, do we want to have an October workshop? If so, what would we want to have on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't know that we necessarily need to discuss this at the October workshop, because it may be that we need a little bit more time to prepare for it. But I think we've all, at some point, talked about discussing our speed limits here in Bel Air specifically, or at least some of us. I've heard some comments on discussing that, specifically around the North Oliver, north of 45th Street. And I wonder if it might be a good discussion for a workshop to do a light review of our speed limits and bring in some staff expertise to talk through that and see if any changes are warranted there.
I will tell you, I've had some conversation with Police Chief Atterberry, who may have seen the orange flags now with 45th and Oliver being closed, the increased traffic that that's brought, or 45th and Hillside. There's a 45th.
Hillside.
It is Hillside. That's closed, yeah. So, the orange flag's there, you have Oliver, and the speed limit on there, and so that's why they have the flags, reminding everybody, you know, it's the same there in Hillside, but for that. That's something that we want to discuss. We certainly can. Are you thinking we may need to change some speed limits, or?
Perhaps, yeah. Something that stands out to me is, you know, on Rock, where we're two lane with no shoulder, I think there are portions of that that are 45. And then over on Oliver, we've got 40 when you're out on what looks like County Road, and I think that's confusing for a lot of people. We should evaluate if it's appropriate to do something different there, and if there are other areas that people think we need to review, I think that should be part of the discussion as well.
There's parks on Woodlawn, too, where it goes from 40 to 55, then you see the world's smallest speed limit sign back down to 40.
Well, that's not that one.
I know, that's.
Yep. Yeah, and we also have, I received a couple RFPs for Phase 1 design, Phase 1 of the park, master park plan design of that. So, that's something we can talk, you can review those, talk about that. The only issue that I think I had mentioned was that our typical workshop would be next Tuesday, and several of us, as we mentioned earlier, would be getting back from the LEAK Conference on Monday, and Jim had told me he's going to be out two, well, actually, the rest of the week.
Actually, probably the rest of the month.
The month, so.
I end here at the 30th, but I just don't see that as being a viable date.
And so, if we want to have one, maybe combine an October-November one, maybe later in the month, because we do actually have two weeks after our 16th meeting before our first meeting in November. It was a thought I had, if councils.
I'm okay with that.
Would consider something like that.
So, it sounds like there really aren't pressing issues, there's issues that we certainly needed, yeah.
Yep. And then when we get into the holidays, everybody gets kind of busy and stuff, so maybe just combine that, and then if people are open.
Well, after this workshop, being Thanksgiving and Christmas is coming, I recommend that we do everything on this workshop that staff and Mr. Oyster and you want, and then table the workshops until January, because you're going to have Thanksgiving, then you've got Christmas, and you've got all this stuff going on at the schools, programs, and et cetera.
So, have them want an October, but not?
Just have one in October and then give the staff a rest.
Okay. What do we want to look at? So, saying perhaps the 23rd?
Yeah, or any day that week, or 29th, 30th. You know, we wouldn't want to do it on 31st. It's a Wednesday, anyway, so.
Anybody have a preference on that week of the 22nd?
Mr. Mayor, did Councilmember Benaj comment that he could attend if we waited till the 30th?
Right now, my schedule looks like I'll be in town that week, so the 29th, 30th. 30th is the first WSU basketball game, but.
29.
But, you know, no arrangement for my schedule, because my schedule gets crazy sometimes.
So, you could come on the 29th?
Yeah.
That's a Monday. What do you guys think? Let's do it.
29th is fine with me, if that gives the staff time.
Another issue I would like to consider, we've not seen any sales this year on our commercial or mixed-use properties, and I'd like to discuss what we need to do to invigorate that, get that moving, because we should be seeing some sales with the economy up and lots of development going on all over the area. I think we should see some activity as well. Just want to see what can we do differently that make a difference.
Yeah, I know we've talked a little bit about some of the things with the marketing, and I'm glad to see maybe we get an update on that. I know, Christian, you guys have done some work on with that website, and the, you know, some of the marketing that we've started to do along exactly what Councilman Benaj has said, and we, you know, heard from the home sales last month, and so, yeah, working on this marketing, and we're talking about the, you know, Phase 1 of this park, which is all good for promoting sales, all of that. So, yeah, it's all kind of related, but we certainly have those three items there. So, bring your ideas and buyers, if you have any, for that, so.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is on the 29th of October?
I believe that's what we're doing.
6:30.
Okay. Around 5:00.
You know.
Yeah. Mind everybody on that.
Mr. Mayor, if I can say, I don't think that there'll be anything that we have to do before December 31st, like things that council would have to review for codification or something like that, or land bank final closing, but there may be a need for a small workshop to that effect. I don't anticipate it, though, because I believe last year we were able to take care of those things in January.
All right. Of course, being an election year, that's good, too. They're not, get a lot of changes right now.
Right.
All right. I have no need for an executive session. Anybody else? Anybody have anything else to bring before council this evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If nothing else, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
First and second to adjourn at 7:47. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. You are adjourned at 7:47.